Dude, is it loud?
What did you say?
Take it off speakerphone.
Okay. No. Says iPad too. Okay. Okay. I just pushed my home button and turned everything off. How about now?
Perfect. Hey Tom, this is Greg, can you hear me?
Yes sir. Hello Greg.
Excellent. Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
On fourth, make no mistake, the bill is not only unconstitutional, it federalizes the implementation of elections. It asserts state standing.
I didn't see a mute. I don't see a screen. I don't see a screen yet.
Is that me? Oh, okay. Are we gonna get it started on this at any time soon? I mean, is it seven o'clock, seven oh six?
We are, it's just we're trying to get all the technology set, so then we'll get started.
What are you, Dan, what are you trying to get on Zoom?
Hand the Wi-Fi.
Oh.
The Wi-Fi, I sent it to you as text. Always.
Text me?
I sent it there just to eat.
You got a cup?
Yeah, well, I sent it to him as a V card.
He can get the V, okay. Can you get on there, Dan? Get on now, go ahead. We're just about there. How you coming, Dan? You good?
I'm not, I'm not on yet, but that's okay. I'm working at it.
Okay.
You could do.
Well, if we can, we'll just turn our computer so they can see you. And as long as you speak into the mic, we'll be okay. Okay Christina, ready? Okay. Let's call this meeting to order. It is, uh, it's March 16th, it's the Elbert County Planning Commission. The time is, uh, what do we have, seven oh nine? So if we could start the meeting, could I ask everybody to stand and we'll do a prayer and a pledge?
Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. We know that you're with us at all times, in all places, if only we turn to you in faith. And so we turn to you now, seeking your continued blessings on those of us who have chosen public service. As well as who are with us tonight in person or through Zoom to join us in our deliberations and decision making. We ask that you would give us patience and commitment to respect and to listen to each other. For the members of this commission, help us always to be mindful that we are public servants. Help us to hear with our hearts and to think clearly and reasonably. Help us to have the vision to look at the issues before us with wisdom. And the information to do what is best. Even if it's not easy. Tonight, we also ask you
Let me see here.
Yeah, I muted and the mic is on, it's getting me
Was it you?
I can't get on Zoom.
Okay. Well, that's good we found out. Alright. Alright. Christine, if we could, roll call please. Here.
Here.
Present. Six, we're good? Okay. Six? Alright, thank you. You have a forum. Alright. Let's go on staff report. Christina, do you have anything to report?
Um, I only have one thing on here, and that's update from the February 24th, 2021, B O C C meeting. Uh, the Richee Rezone, which was approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda? We have nothing on the consent agenda, I don't believe. Alright, at this time, um, actually we have citizen comments. Now, the citizen comments at this point in the meeting are for anything unrelated to the applications that are being heard tonight. So if, again, if you have anything that's not related to those, please. Seeing none? Alright. I think we'll probably have some when our applications come up. Uh, we've got a set of meeting minutes from February 16th. Okay. Did anybody get them?
There's nobody.
Did you look at them? I You guys go through them?
I did not go through them.
You good with them? Okay, because they were on, they were in the package, and I kind of looked through them. Okay? So, who's all gonna abstain?
I need to abstain, I wasn't
Yes, you do, two, three, you won't have enough. So, we'll put them on for next meeting, Christina? Okay? We won't have enough. Alright. So, now we're gonna go into our public hearing process, let me go over just a few things. What, what our commission is about and the process. First of all, we're a volunteer group. Planning Commission, what we do, we're quasi judicial board. Essentially, what we take, we take the application at hand, we, we judge it based on our codes and ordinances that we have in the county. That's what our job is. Three things come out of this committee. We can either vote for approval, denial, or approval with conditions. What approval means is that we're actually not approving the document or the application, we're approving or recommending that it be approved to go forward to the Board of Accounting Commissioners. They have the authority to make changes, to do stuff, anything else. We have very little authority in this group. So again, we can approve, but it's recommend to approve. We can deny, recommend to deny, or we can recommend to approve with conditions. And conditions are things that we could add to the, to each application. So, the process works, first of all, first presenter is our county staff. What they will do, they will present the application. Go through the view of it. Then we'll ask the applicant to then participate, present their side. And then at that point, we'll ask for citizen comments. We'll take notes on all the citizen comments. Then we'll go back and ask the applicant to maybe, if questions come up within those comments, we'll go back and see if we can get some clarification for things that were questioned. After the citizen comments are done, and we've, we've had a chance to have the applicant rebut the the items or whatever's brought up, then we'll question the applicant or staff depending on what the board has. And at that point, we vote. After that's completed, we vote as the way I mentioned before. Okay, so, to start, I think the first hearing we have set up is Shady Tree Services, this is an S U R. S U R nineteen dash zero one three zero, special use by review. So if we could
Danny, real quick.
Presenting that, Greg.
Yeah, you know, can we go ahead and do Miller Ranch first? Is that okay?
Do we want to do Miller Ranch first, because there's two, there's two filings?
Yeah, I think, I think the applicant wanted to make a couple of comments. He, he's here tonight.
Is he?
Yep.
Okay. Alright.
I'll make a motion.
Well, let's amend the agenda to do that, what we'll do, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to do the Miller
Two plots first, okay, do I have a second, second? Okay. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Alright. Okay, so the first one that will be up will be Miller Ranch filing number two. So, you, you mentioned that the applicant wanted to make a comment?
Yes. Here's Peter Knight. Go ahead CJ.
Mr. Curse, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, we're not gonna have a full hearing tonight, we were informed this morning, I guess late morning, that the staff is still looking at, um, the Metro District Service Plan, um, which was originally approved back in, I want to say 2007. Um, and possibly, um, an item related to the zoning, the original zoning of a development guide agreement, which frankly, for me, that was all news to me, I didn't know that that was outstanding stuff, and so, um, there's been some discussions about continuing tonight until those things have been reviewed and resolved. So I, I believe that that's what staff, um, is prepared to do, is to reschedule this for a date certain. Staff talked a little bit about, um, allowing enough time to, to get through all this, and, um, we don't want to let too much time go. Um, speaking specifically with the, the Millers themselves, they would prefer that we're only talking about a month. Continuation.
Can you get everything together?
Well, we, we know that we have, um, some updating to do on the service plan, which we don't expect that to, to, to take too long and to get it into the county's hands for their review. We think we're gonna have to set up a meeting with, obviously, staff, um, and potentially, um, county attorney to, to, to talk about the zoning situation. Since that is some, somewhat news to us that that would be required, given the fact that we are where we are today, and it's never come up before, and finally one's been recorded already, so we, we think we can get that all resolved here in the next thirty days.
So, Christina, do you have a date? What's, um,
Yeah, we'll make it work.
Okay.
Alright Danny, so I think we've identified a date.
What do you got, Greg?
May 4th.
May 4th?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Curse, go ahead. The word?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, what we need, if we're going to, to do this, um, I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh,
We're gonna have to do it on each file. I think we probably have to do it on both files.
I'll make a motion that we continue the Miller Ranch filing number two until a date certain of May 4th.
Okay. You got a second? You did that, Peter made the most, and we had a second from Dan or Roger, either one, both. Okay, alright.
I'll make a motion that we continue the Miller Ranch filing number three until a date certain of May 4th.
Got a second? Dave? Okay, so we've got two motions, first motion, is there any discussion on the first motion? Okay, all in favor? Alright. Alright, second motion was filing three, any discussion on filing three?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Will? So, with that, folks, if you were here for the Miller Ranch uh, development application, that is gonna be continued until May 4th, uh, May 4th. Okay, and I, if you didn't hear, it was based on, not sure of the zone, he mentioned zoning issues and material that needs to be added to the application. So, I think I got them both, right? Okay. Okay, so now we're at, um, before we go on that one, let's do, go to Shady Tree Services, this is an S U R nineteen dash zero one three zero. If we could, I think first we'll have the, uh, county staff?
You got it. Thank you Danny. Alrighty, appreciate it commissioners. Good evening, everybody, I'm Greg Loudon Seiger of Community and Development Services. Tonight, we're taking a look at Shady Tree Service, Special Use by Review, S U dash one nine dash zero one three zero. This is a request for a special use by review to allow for a tree and lawn care service located on approximately nine point nine one, excuse me, nine point zero nine one acres, located at one two four nine County Road one sixty six, Parker?
Greg, it's not coming through on Zoom.
Okay. Give me one second here, folks. There we go. One more, please. Thank you. The property owner is Ron Hildebrandt. Ron Hildebrandt is also the applicant. Size of the property is nine point zero nine one acres. A pre-application meeting was held December 5th, 2019. The community meeting was waived in the pre-application meeting. A formal application was submitted June 25th, 2020. And the referral process ran from August 31st to September 21st of 2020, that's a twenty one day referral. Planning Commission is tonight, March 16th, 2021. And this case will be heard by the Board of Accounting Commissioners on April 14th, 2021. The notice of public hearing was mailed to property owners within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet of the subject property boundary on February 26th, 2021. Public notice sign was posted on property March 1st, 2021. And notification was published in the Elbert County News on February 25th, 2021. Here we have the notarized certification of mailing. Here we have the notarized certification of signposting with a photo of the sign posted on property. And last, the affidavit of publication. Here's a vicinity map of the property. You can see Singing Hills. And here is an area zoning map. And if you zoom in there, um, but most of the properties kind of around that area are either RA or RA one. There are some areas of planned unit development and also some commercial across the street. Applications for this were sent to the referral agents per the Elbert County Regulations. Responding referral agents were the Elizabeth Fire District, who has no objection, they did ask for six conditions of approval that I will get to here at the end. The Colorado Division of Water Resources has no objection. Um, they do have the one condition of approval that if the, um, if the well is to be used for commercial uses, it needs to be re-permitted. The applicant has specified that no water will be used with this S U R. The Elbert County Building Department has no objections. Kiowa Conservation District has no objections. Colorado Geological Survey has no objections. And Intermountain Rural Electric Association has no objections. Impact fees. Impact fees are applicable to any structures associated with this use. This includes the current residents, if a change of occupancy is ever required by the building department. As of now, there are no structures being proposed as part of this S U R, and therefore, impact fees are not applicable at this time. If structures are added or a change of occupancy is required, then impact fees will be assessed at that time. Special uses, special uses by review are evaluated utilizing criteria listed in Article three E five A through H of the Elbert County Zoning Regulations. Criteria A, whether the use is in harmony and compatible with the surrounding area and neighborhood. The location of the tree and lawn care use being proposed is well suited for a low-impact commercial use as it is directly adjacent to the County Road one sixty six, which is also known as Singing Hills Road. B, whether the use will not have an undue burden on available infrastructure. The use being proposed requires very little electricity and does not require any water. Colorado Division of Water Resources has stipulated that the existing well, number one four eight two seven nine Colorado Division of Water Resources has stipulated that the existing well, number one four eight two seven nine, would need to be re-permitted as a commercial well if it is to be used for commercial uses associated with this special use by review. Criteria C, whether the use will not unduly increase traffic congestion or burden the existing road system. It is not expected that these proposed uses will unduly increase traffic congestion on County Road one sixty six. Criteria D, whether the use will not cause significant air, odor, water, noise, or light pollution. The uses being proposed will not cause significant air, odor, water, noise, or light pollution. Furthermore, the applicant has expressed a strong commitment to utilizing best practices to mitigate noise and light pollution. Criteria E, whether all sanitation requirements will be met. Elbert County Health and Human Services, now known as Elbert County Health Department, has indicated that the proposed use does not require restroom facilities. Criteria F, whether the use will be adequately landscaped, buffered, and screened. The uses being proposed are adequately buffered by the sixteen ponderosa pines that are proposed as part of this special use by review. Criteria G, whether the use will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the present and/or future inhabitants of Elbert County. The Elizabeth Fire Protection District has reviewed this application and has determined that all requirements have been met. Additionally, the applicant has detailed plans and procedures to both prevent and respond to emergencies. And Criteria H, whether supplemental standards are met for specific uses as applicable. And there are no supplemental standards for this type of land use. In addition to Elbert County zoning regulations, staff reviewed the application against the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan, and the proposed use of the property is supportive of the stated goal that quote, "Elbert County promotes strong, diverse economic development." And the policies of that goal being EG six, that the county should support the development of agriculture, commerce, industry, education, healthcare, natural resources development, tourism, and residential growth. Findings and recommendation. One, this use is in general conformance with the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. Two, this use meets the criteria for approval in the Elbert County Zoning Regulations. Three, the Elbert County subdivision regulations are not applicable to this application. Four, this use is compatible with existing and allowed land uses in the surrounding area. And five, this use will not result in significant impact to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and landowners of the surrounding area. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend that the Board of Accounting Commissioners approve S U dash one nine dash zero one three zero, subject to conditions. Condition one, the applicant will be required to remove public hearing signs within seven days of approval by the Board of Accounting Commissioners. Two, the special use by review will not become effective until conditions of approval are met and documents are recorded. Three, recordation of all appropriate documentation is to occur within a hundred and eighty days of Board Accounting Commissioner's approval. Four, if the applicant builds new buildings or new businesses are added to the property, fire department review and/or impact fees may be assessed at that time. Five, a turnaround size to the satisfaction of the Elizabeth Fire District will be provided near the Woodbank area. Six, wood storage area may be subject to annual fire inspection by Elizabeth Fire District. Seven, all buildings may be subject to an annual fire inspection by Elizabeth Fire District. Eight, the applicant shall install two A dash twenty B dash C fire extinguishers within fifty feet of travel distance. Nine, the applicant shall plug all electrical equipment into permanent wiring. Ten, all storage will be neat and not within twenty-four inches of ceilings. Eleven, all exit doors will be accessible for exiting. Twelve, pliable liquids will be stored in proper containers. Thirteen, all outdoor light fixtures associated with the use is permitted by the special use by review are to be on motion sensors and properly shielded from adjoining and adjacent properties and any street right-of-way. And fourteen, all commercial well permits shall be, or excuse me, a commercial well permit shall be obtained if water is to be used for the commercial uses associated with this special use by review. And number fifteen is actually an error. It should be only fourteen conditions of approval. Thank you.
We received some information, Greg. I think you sent some information.
Sorry, Dan, can you speak up?
Did you, we received some information. I think you just sent some email.
Yeah, the, um, the recorded covenants, I did, I did send the recorded covenants. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes. Okay, you sent those. And was there something else? Was there?
Yep, uh, public comment as well. Commissioners received the, uh, public comment. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, okay. Yes, I wanted you to, to be sure.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
At this time, second part was the applicant, Mr. Hildebrandt, I think is, is the applicant. Yes, sir, would you like to present? You have? Do you have anything to add? Do you have? Okay.
We, not much different than what we're doing now, but we would like to expand our business in that location and that corridor.
Okay.
As far as that goes.
Okay.
Oh. Don't have any other comments unless you have any questions you want me to answer.
We probably will, but what I would ask is, I think we've got, we've got a number of people who want to speak. Um, if you could listen to the things that come up, you may be able to help with addressing some of the things that may come up in public comment.
Sure.
Okay?
You bet.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, what we'll do, this is for citizen comments related to this application. So what we would ask is that first you give us your name, your address, and then please, we, we request that you keep your, your comments to the three minutes. If we could, could stay in that vicinity would be helpful. Okay, so looks like first one we have, um, Mr. Turner, Ron Turner. I think you're first on the list here.
Okay, I am Ron Turner. My address, one one zero five County Road one sixty six. This is a Parker address, eight zero one three eight, but it's Elbert County. Good evening. I would like to thank you, planning commissioners, for the work that you do. Uh, having been a county commissioner, I know how much work it is to do a review of land use. I hope you had time to, uh, and opportunity to read the letters and emails that we sent. Uh, you should have at least five documents that reject this S U R application. And if you've read my letter, you see some of the history that we've had with Shady Tree in the past when they tried to create a P U D on this RA one zone lot. And this was back, started in October of twenty eleven. Uh, C D S, the planning commissioners and Board of County Commissioners have red, done a really good job with the update of the issue, the Elbert County Zoning Regulations. And I reviewed these, uh, in relationship to this S U R. I would like to refer you to Article two, Section F two. Applicants are required to have a community meeting, but the C D S director may waive the community meeting. Article three, Section E three. And there was no community meeting and no reason was given to us. Uh, there's very little transparency in what has occurred here. Uh, this application actually started in December twenty nineteen, and we got notification via mail uh, March first, twenty twenty one. And, uh, I would refer you to Article five. And it's important, the details, it details the land use table. And there is no allowance for a shady tree-type business. Article five, Section C allows C D S director to add potential S U Rs. But this determination shall be made in writing and shall be applicable to the specific proposal in sight. I've not seen this written determination. Maybe you have it in your packets. This determination would be very difficult to write because Shady, Shady Tree's application is not similar to and compatible with uses specifically named within the particular zone district. Lot four is zone RA one and is residential agricultural. Um, Article four, Section C one gives purpose of a residential agricultural context is to promote low to medium-density residential development while preserving working agricultural lands. And a lot of us have horses and, uh, I don't have any children, but we've got some new folks that have children and I can see them working four H. Interesting, the narrative for this S U R is very light in information. But one of the letters that you'll look in your packet from Ron Hildebrandt to Elbert County Commissioners dated June twelfth, twenty twenty, concerns me greatly. This letter requests the possibility to rent, lease some space to like service companies. This request seems to be somewhat open-ended. The Shady Tree business does not meet the characteristics of Meadowlark subdivision with zoning of an RA one, an RA. Uh, I would please vote recommend to deny this S U R. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe next is, um, Chris Seaborn.
Copies of a letter. And I'm Chris Seaborn and my wife, Ellen Seaborn is standing beside me. She was actually next on your list. We're, we're just gonna speak together.
Your address certain?
Yeah, it's, uh, one zero seven nine Singing Hills Road.
Okay.
Members of the planning commission, um, my wife and I reside at one zero seven nine Singing Hills Road, uh, immediately adjacent to the proposed Shady Tree special use. Uh, we moved to Elbert County in two thousand and seven and purchased this particular property because of its rural location and the surrounding agricultural equine community. Uh, we are opposed to the Shady Tree S U R in its current format for the following reasons. Uh, the S U R is incompatible with the surrounding land uses. Uh, per the zoning regulations, the special use should be in harmony with and compatible with the surrounding area and neighborhood. Property of the proposed S U R is part of the Meadowlark subdivision, residential subdivision of ten acre plots. The properties on all sides of the S U R are all single-family residences. All properties within the Meadowlark subdivision are designated RA. Residential agricultural context is defined in the Elbert County Regulations with the following purpose and intent, to promote low to medium-density residential development while preserving working agricultural lands. Non-commercial farming, open space, ranching, and agriculturally-related uses are allowed accessory to a primary residence. The S U R as a commercial business does not fall within this purpose and intent. Meadowlark subdivision is a covenant-controlled residential community, and the S U R is in direct violation of the Meadowlark covenants as recorded with Elbert County, March thirty, nineteen eighty-eight. The owners of the S U R property do not reside on the property and thus do not have an understanding or interest in the effects this development will have on the surrounding community. The owners of Shady Tree indicate in their proposal that they want to sublet their property to other commercial entities. This is wholly inappropriate in a residential subdivision. Now, the Meadowlark subdivision is a residential agricultural, agricultural context, not a commercial or industrial context. Shady Tree previously attempted to change the permitted use of this lot via planned unit development in two thousand and eleven. It was denied. This is the same request as the P U D restructured and repackaged as an S U R. This request should also be denied on the same basis as the previous request. Shady Tree purchased their property knowing it was a residential subdivision zoned RA with covenants. This is not a commercial area. If Shady Tree wants to establish a commercial enterprise, we encourage this, but they should purchase property already zoned commercial to accomplish this. Our homes are our biggest investment. And the commercial development interests of a single residential property owner should not override the interests and property values of the surrounding property owners in what is a designated residential subdivision. This is not an application of a homeowner who lives on site wishing to sell something like wood crafts or furniture out of their garage as a hobby. The landowners here want to run a full-fledged commercial enterprise out of a location they do not reside at. A commercial enterprise with heavy equipment and that generates significant debris. This is going to have a significant impact on the surrounding residential community, and we request it be denied. And thank you for hearing me. And, uh, there is additional items in my letter that I didn't speak to, and I hope you all take the time to read that. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Turner. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Good evening. My name is Nancy Turner. I reside at one one zero fives County Road one sixty six, also known as Singing Hills Road in Meadowlark subdivision. This is a platted covenant RA, RA one subdivision. Meadowlark subdivision is one of the oldest subdivisions on Singing Hills Road in Elbert County. There are six lots in this subdivision. Mr. Hildebrandt has lot four. Lot four borders all of the other lots. Mr. Hildebrandt knew when he purchased lot four, it was zoned RA and RA one. The residents of lot one, two, three, four, and six are located at the front of each lot. The back part of each lot is where the people enjoy the rural lifestyle Elbert County offers, properties zoned RA and RA one. Our back property has a pond. When we have normal moisture, it fills with water. Herons stop at the pond for a day or two on their migration. There are wild geese and ducks that use that pond. The ducks nest and raise their ducklings. Red-wing and yellow-wing blackbirds nest all along the willows of each of our subdivision properties. There are turtles along the banks and there are frogs. Serenade the whole subdivision with their love songs. Red-tailed and barn owls hump these properties, and there are deer, foxes, and coyotes. I know not everyone's favorite, but I enjoy watching them. The S U R Mr. Hildebrandt has submitted is not a small business endeavor that will take place in the residence of lot four. This is an industrial-style business that will use nine-plus acres. There will be industrial vehicles, machinery, and chemicals that are used in a tree service business. There will be truckloads of dead trees and debris dumped on the property to be processed and stored. Sixteen ponderosa pine trees will not mitigate the noise or the visual of this industrial business. Instead of frogs serenading the subdivision, it will be the sound of wood chippers and other industrial machinery. This will affect the property values of all the other residents of the RA, RA one subdivision. Elbert County officials worked hard to create an E C D Z zone. It specifically excludes platted subdivisions. The purpose of this, the purpose S U R, the proposed S U R for lot four is not in line with residential agriculture subdivision. It is for this reason I request you deny the S U R for lot four of Meadowlark subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a Joe Atwell. Did I get that right? I, okay.
I'll be short. Um, I agree with everything that they said. You'll see a lot of, turn it on. Oh. Okay, better.
There we go.
Okay, so I agree with everything they said. I moved here, I'm a native Coloradan. I moved here, uh, late November. I moved here late November. It was obvious that there was a, some sort of a tree cutting operation there. I thought that was cool, just that people get the opportunity to live and work and be free. Finding out that the gentleman presenting this application doesn't actually live at the property, he's not trying to expand his business at his residence, he's doing it in my backyard. My deck overlooks his property, my hot tub overlooks his property. The way things stand now, it does not bother me one bit, the idea of subletting out the property to like businesses so that they can park their equipment there, their whatever they want there. I mean, this application is very vague. It looks like the kind of thing that could run away quickly. I'm investing several thousand dollars this summer in landscaping, tree lines, windbreaks. This isn't really what I signed up for and I didn't expect it in a residential agricultural zoning that I did sign up for. So I won't go on and on about it. You're gonna, you got plenty of it there in front of you to review. I hope you think about it, you know, is this something that you would really want going in your backyard or every time that you're getting in your hot tub with the family, you're looking over and seeing commercial trucks, piles of wood, wood chippers, on and on. But I think it's clear how we feel about it in our subdivision. That's another very important thing. It is a subdivision, it is a residential area, clearly, if you drive down the road and look at it. So I'll leave it at that. I hope you guys vote no on this. It's clearly not in the spirit of how things were set up there. Thank you.
Okay. We have Dalton Lockman. We have a Dalton Lockman. He signed up here, so. It might have been, thank you. Dalton and Lisa, so they were probably on Lisa. Calligan. Celeste Calligan, no. Dave Legan. And Brenda Lips. No. So these must have all been for Miller Ranch. So, all right, do we have anybody else here in house who would like to speak? Okay, how about, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes, sorry, I had my hand raised. Would you like me to just speak?
Yes, go ahead. Please.
Let me see if I can get. Good evening, thank you. My name is Alyssa Teskey. My address is one zero four seven Singing Hills Road. Thank you, commissioners, for considering us and being there this evening. We appreciate it. My husband, who is currently at work, and I would like to submit our comments. We also sent a letter and we do hope that you have had time to read them and consider our opinions. We are very concerned with this application, as our neighbors have said, and they are much more versed in the articles, so I will keep it short. This is an attempt to bring into the county zoning rules their business that they have been running. Our concern is the leased land to like businesses. Our property is lot two. It is directly bordering the lot where their proposed leased area is. Without any community meeting or communication from Shady Tree, we do not know what is going to be there. There is no regulation, there is no plan. Will there be large equipment? Will there be debris? How will they mitigate if this debris is diseased or sprayed or will it be coming into our property? I think those are our concerns and thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on Zoom? I do not see anyone. Greg, do you see anybody?
I'm not. If you're on Zoom and you'd like to speak, please go ahead and either raise your hand or unmute yourself and go ahead and speak, please.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Katie Myers. I live in Brittany Ridge, which is way out on one fifty four and twenty one. And I didn't actually come here for this part of the meeting, but I stayed for it. And having listened to the owners that live next to this property, I want to stand up for someone who does not live next to that property. I can understand their concern from a noise and in the business perspective, you're trying to enjoy your backyard and all of a sudden what you thought was someone's residential property, where they were enjoying their property or backyard, all of a sudden becomes a business. So I object to it for that reason. But for me personally, more importantly, having to drive on one sixty six into work or to go shopping, I would not want there to be turns into that business without proper turn lanes because any amount of traffic going into that property is going to slow the regular traffic. And that's really all I had to say. Thank you.
All right, do we have anyone else?
I'm not seeing anybody, Danny, and it looks like all the people on phones are unmuted, so it looks like everybody does have the opportunity to speak up if they'd like to. If there's anybody on Zoom, now's your chance to speak. All right, Danny, I'm not seeing any. Thank you.
Okay. Sir, there was a couple of things that came out. See, equipment, extent of your business, it sounds like a lot of people are questioning, okay, what type of equipment's going to be there? To what degree, how, how commercialized is this going to become? How much of the area, because you've got an application that shows us kind of a smaller part of your lot with offsets and shielding and stuff. So I think there's quite a few questions as to what your business is going to actually entail, how much, how much traffic it's going to create?
I don't think it's going to create a lot of traffic. I know Elbert County has, through their zoning and that has kind of cracked down on a lot of home based businesses in the area, which they should have. And there's so much development going on that a lot of these, you know, may need someplace to park light equipment. There's not going to be anything heavy in there. We're not talking great big commercial yellow equipment or anything like that. If I have a chance to, you know, rent a little space out to help pay for things, I think Shady Tree is good for the community. We, we really help take care of the forest here and in, you know, beautiful Elbert County. Elbert County's been good to us. And along with that, we try to give back as much as we can to the community. We do have a pile of Christmas trees out there every year that we donate our time and energy and funds into a community recycling program for free for any areas, residents in that area. Along with that though, you know, we do generate some wood because we are a tree service. You know, in the past, we've tried selling firewood many times and there's absolutely zero money in it and along with the effort that goes into it. So we just decided to take a cue from some other communities back east and we started a wood bank. That takes up a large portion of that area. And the community wood bank is, we don't actually sell firewood. We, we started this a year ago and we, we cut, split and our time, our funds, and we donate, we donate that wood to citizens in need in mostly Elbert County, but Douglas County too. We do all of Douglas and Elbert County. And it's crazy how much of that, that program has taken off this year. We've actually donated free delivered firewood to dozens and dozens and dozens of people in Elbert County. Our son does live on the property, so he is part owner, not legally, but will be. I think we're aware of what's going on. We try to be good neighbors, take care of things. But we would like to expand our business and that's pretty much a commercial corridor and it's, you know, we're going to leave the back half of that property open for wildlife. That, that part we agreed on, at least some of it. Is there any other questions I can answer? Hey, you guys good?
On the, on the site plan, on part of the back area, it says like contractor storage area. Could you explain that?
As far as maybe renting out some, a few spaces to some like, like companies, maybe tree service, maybe some landscapers. If we need to fence it in, we can fence it in. If we need to plant more trees, we can plant more trees to be good neighbors, you know, whatever it takes to come upon agreement with everybody.
So essentially, that could be a rental or lease kind of a situation.
Well, we could rent some, hopefully, we could rent some space out, yeah, generate a little income, but hopefully, we won't need to do that. Hopefully, it'll just be our equipment if, if, you know, our company grows enough.
Another question, what equipment do you presently have on?
Chipper trucks, chippers, spray, spray, spray trucks.
How many?
Oh, there's maybe six or eight pieces of equipment on there now. We didn't get turned down, we didn't get denied on the last zoning issue. There was just so many issues and the permits expired. I just wanted to make that clear. So all the permits, they expired and we just didn't reapply for them. What about, you know, what about all the piles of chipped material and, and tree material? What, what are you going to do with that? Where's it going to? We don't ever really store any chip. We don't really sell trees or anything like that. We just service our clients' trees and commercial residential. Kind of an agricultural business, if you will. And the chips, we dump offsite. We don't store them on site. For the most part, that's what we've done. The firewood, we try to, you know, obviously get rid of that as it goes. We give it away. We, the firewood we have there or the wood piles that we have there now, actually, they've been splitting your large piles of firewood and like I say, we have just delivered dozens and dozens and dozens of load of free firewood to citizens in need in Elbert County. So I think that's a growing program there. How much do you see that expanding over what's already there? Well, by the needs of that firewood program, I can see that expanding dramatically because we've only done it a year and we've just really, as far as size goes, I know it's not going to engulf the whole property by no means. It comes in, it goes out, it gets split up, it goes out, as far as that goes. And we paid a, you know, haul off the slash, that type of thing. Or we have trucks that we do it with ourselves, if it gets to that point.
I have a question here. How much chipping or cutting do you do on site?
We really don't. The only chipping, well, we cut up the firewood. I take that back. We do cut up the firewood on site. But as far as shipping, we haven't, we don't really do a lot of shipping. The most shipping I think we've done is for the, the Christmas tree recycling program that we sponsor for, for that area, Elbert County area and the surrounding rural area. And that doesn't require much. It's a half a day's worth of chipping.
So you say you don't generate a lot of noise or disturbance like that?
No.
And you work reasonable hours, eight to five, roughly, you're not going to be working into the night or anything like that?
How long have you been operating now?
Excuse me?
How long have you been operating now?
Well, we've been, I guess used by right, we've been operating now there for several years.
Kind of the same operation you're.
Basically the same operation, yeah, yeah. I don't see it growing by leaps and leaps and bounds anytime in the near future. That would be nice, but it is kind of a commercial corridor. I mean, you have the fire department, you have Colorado lining commercial across the street, you have Elbert County, most of these residents look out at the Elbert County transfer substation there and that's, you know, that's part of that corridor right there, the school and everything else. So we've been there quite a while. We're not trying to run all the neighbors off or, you know, run the neighborhood down by any means where we can plant trees or put up fences or whatever it takes.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. I gotta figure out this mic here, not get too loud. If I understand your business, you run around and take care of down trees, trim trees for people all over the city. You bring the wood back, then you give the wood away. Is that correct?
Pretty much correct. We try not to bring it back if we don't have to, but yeah, it's time.
You do bring it back.
A lot of people in Elbert County use.
And, and I have a question here because when you bring the wood back to Elbert County, specifically I'm going to speak to the pine beetle problem that we have. Do you bring back and, and you got to, do you treat the wood that is, shall I say, beetle
Do we treat the wood? We, we do treat the wood, but we try not to.
With chemicals?
We try not to bring back any beetle.
Right. Well, what I'm concerned with, with Elbert County, since we live in a county full of ponderosa pines. And occasionally, you're going to run into trees that have died and you are going to bring back wood. Transporting wood per the USDA and others, they want you to move wood, but then they, I have strict rules about covering it, spraying it, killing the pine beetles since it doesn't die. And the possibility of bringing contamination to our trees that are living in this county is a question. I'd like you to speak to that. And if you are not treating the wood or you're not bringing them back, I'd like to understand what the process is.
Well, not all wood is contaminated, but.
I understand that, but we are, when, when a tree is dead and you get a call, you're going to say, hey, I got this tree, take it down. What killed it? Ips beetle, Rocky Mountain pine beetle, we got all kinds of things that could spread to this.
There's thirteen different types of Ips beetle in this Colorado.
I know. I've lived here fifty years almost.
Yeah, that's my son Tyler. He might help me answer some of the technical.
I'm the chemical guy.
As far as treating the wood, the beetle lives directly underneath the bark. We encourage, you know, there's a lot of tree companies, most of our work is in Elbert County out in that area. So we do more good than we do harm, a hundred percent, as far as treating trees, as far as.
Do you use chemicals?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are you, what are you using?
Promethrin.
Promethrin for the most.
Okay, so you're covering with a fumigant. You got fumigant to kill the beetle.
Water as a carrier. And this particular chemical, they actually apply to livestock, cows, pigs, horses.
It's safe for livestock?
Yes, sir. Recommended mixture. Do not bypass.
Okay, and I just wanted to understand because this description I had in the packet didn't really describe your business completely. So you have chippers that you go out, so you can do a tree service all over.
Mostly Douglas.
Mostly Douglas, Elbert County.
Okay.
Ninety-nine percent of our business.
So I, my next question is to staff. Why is this an S U R instead of a rezone?
Because it's not, it's not a use.
Well, really, uh, I'm speaking, this is a subdivision. I'm asking a question, uh, for the entire planning commission. I'm looking at this and this isn't a subdivision. It is really a subdivision, even if it's a minor. And I'm looking at that and I'm saying, well, this begs to, to me, it begs for a rezone and also a traffic study. And I don't understand why we don't have a traffic study. He says there's very few, but it sounds like he comes back in and out of the property. So why did we get an S U R?
Well, I, um, I, I believe the applicant proposed a special use by review as opposed to a commercial rezone as the S U R only allows for one particular use, whereas a commercial rezone opens it up to a number of different uses. So I, I, I'm not sure the applicant's motivation in that regard, but um, the, the S U R is, is less, um, intensive of a use than a commercial rezone. So I think that's probably out of respect for his neighbors. The traffic study, excuse me, traffic letter, um, wa- is not required. Public Works did not start requiring that until recently. So this dates back to two thousand nineteen when we did not require traffic letters. So.
So I, I'm just, okay. The so I, I, I have a question to the planning commission. I mean, I really, um, we, we did pass E D Z. When we did economic development to zone, we placed it along Singing Hills Road as one of them, County Road thirteen, one fifty-eight and a lot of roads. One of the things we did exclude from the E D Z because we did not want to get into the subdivisions was anything that was a P U D, anything that was a subdivision would not be included in the E D Z. I kinda look at this and it, this is a subdivision, even if it is a minor and it's a small five lot, six lot. There are a lot, one, one of the numbers doesn't exist. And I'm asking the question, this is just strictly, you know, to me, okay, if this is a good commercial establishment, why aren't we looking at this as a, if this is gonna go this way, why don't we just do a rezone? And to try to get it through, have a community meeting and actually do it and give the community input? I think the lack of the input, and I, if I quote some of this, uh, no written determination and not that's Ron Turner, but you know, I know that guy. And no meetings. People didn't have the input except right here. So I'm kind of looking at this as, I don't know, I'm just asking you guys to think about it. That's about all of my questions. And do you have anything you'd like to add to me? Because I'm looking at this as, this is a commercial job. You're working, there's a commercial thing right across the street. It's zone commercial. We need to have you zone commercial. That's the way I look at it.
Whoop, there's my wife.
I'm done.
I'm Jan Hildebrand. I own the property, twelve twenty-nine, Mead Road. Reason, oh, sorry. The reason that we did not go with the rezone is because it does not fall under the E D Z overlay. That is what the county told us.
Because it's.
That's why they suggested we go with an S U R.
No, the reason I don't think it falls under the, uh,
Yes.
The E D Z is because of the development. It's in a development, I think.
I, it's in a development. Yeah, so it can be.
But I mean, we, listen, Dan, we've approved businesses and S U Rs in developments all over.
We have.
Okay, um, one of the reasons I think is that, uh, the exclusions to the S U R.
Hold on Danny, can I address that comment that you just made? Uh, i- as far as we've, we've approved businesses in developments?
Yes, we have. Um, yes, we have.
Justin, go ahead.
We've, we've, we've approved businesses. We've approved a B business not long ago. We've approved, we approved a business the other day for the thing, so. Yeah, Justin, we do, but I.
Let me make one. So I, I don't disagree that we have. I think that there's a big distinction between a commercial business in a residential agricultural zoned area versus a agricultural, small B business type business. Um, there, there's a significant difference between those two. So I, I have a few questions regarding this S U R. Um, whenever it's my turn, I would like to ask some of those, I guess.
But, Justin, we don't even have you on the roster.
Yeah. Yeah.
Were you in roll call? Did we get Justin in there?
Nope, I, I wasn't able to get on till seven thirty.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's add Justin to the roster, if we could. All right. So, first thing, the E D Z and from what I remember, okay, the E D Z, there were exclusions for the E D Z and it had to do with developments. Okay, subdivisions, P U Ds and those, and this being in a, I think is part of the Meadow Lark, right? Meadow.
Meadow Lark.
Platted, okay, but it is a subdivision. So I think that's why it was not, it would be excluded from what you would call the E D Z. Yeah. It is a subdivision, but I mean, it's.
Real quick guys, can I remind everybody to please use the microphone?
I just wanted to be sure. That's why the E D Z. Now I think, Justin, you had some questions?
I, I do. Uh, are you finished with the E D Z portion?
Yeah, I just wanted to go over that with the E D Z. Now go on, ask what you, what your questions are.
So first I'll apologize for my tardiness. Um, I, that was unavoidable, unavoidable. Can you clarify for me why there's no community meeting that was required?
Let's have staff clarify that because I think that was a, um, it's not required. It, they can, what is it? Is Lena you? Or like Greg, let staff answer that one.
S U Rs do allow flexibility to, to waive that meeting. Probably a little less than a half of the time I have waived those. Particularly if it's something that's been in existence for a number of years already. Part of that looking at, okay, it's already been there. We haven't received complaints.
So I wanna make sure that I'm looking at the, dang it, I'm, I'm looking at the, the zoning regulations now. F dash two, page forty-eight, uh, does make it a requirement to have a community meeting. So I'm, I'm a little confused on uh, the, the waiver authority on that is Article three, special processes. Uh, B commute, under section B, community meeting, and it does require a written notice for that, uh, to be submitted and then appro- approved by C D S. My second question, I guess, I don't know if you're still waiting on me, sorry. My, my second question is, when you look at the, uh, use tables, there, there's no specific guidelines for a tree operation, but I, I guess the question that I would ask the other planning commissioners is, when we look at considering what an agricultural business uh, in a R A one area consists of, um, those are, I, I guess my, my concern is, are we, are we stepping outside when we consider a commercial tree company, um, as an agricultural business? That, are, are those two the same thing? I, I don't think, in my personal opinion, I don't think they are. How, how is this an agricultural business versus a commercial business?
Justin, in other counties, they do consider it to be agricultural.
We are licensed by the Colorado Department of Agriculture.
The only way I can work is to have that license from the Department of Ag.
They, we need strict guidelines.
So I gue- I guess I'm gonna come back to, how is that not a commercial business? How is this not a commercial business?
Gone wrong. Well, I don't know what you're trying to ask. It, we, we, we are running a business, yes.
We are running a business. We're trying to get a commercial loan. I mean, but it doesn't matter. Yeah, I don't. Well, you know, that is one thing Justin brought up, but we said it was waived over at C D S.
No, but it sounds like, the one thing I'm trying to figure out is, hey, you've had this business operational for how long?
Well, we've been there for.
We bought the house in two thousand and eight.
Like a lot of them out here, yeah, I know. So they're just trying to make it legal now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So how much, how much is it gonna grow?
How much is Elbert County gonna grow? That is our, that's our focus. And the growth that's coming on now is, whoops, the growth that's coming on now is gonna take years to develop and, and have trees and have, so that's not something that's gonna happen right away.
And then the other thing, I, I'm, I'm trying to get, kinda look at, you've explained that you're, you, you go out and pick up trees and you bring them back. Where is your, where is your revenue coming from? Really, what is the biggest source of your revenue?
We do commercial and residential work. We take care of trees, plant healthcare, we trim trees, we remove trees, we spray trees. We fertilize, we fertilize trees.
So the majority of your business, and I'm getting to the point, the majority of your business is done offsite?
Yes.
Yep.
So all you're using this property for is for essentially storage?
Yes. In the wood bank. Which has really been a huge benefit this first year to a lot of residents in Elbert County.
I don't know. You, you see a problem, I don't. Sounds like you, you treat trees, you essentially go around, yeah.
I'm the, I'm the chemical, I'm the chemical expert, the tree hugger, if you will.
Now, then the other question was, there was nobody living on site, but my understanding is you are going to be living there?
I do live there right now. Since two thousand and fifteen, October, I've lived there.
So we do have a residential, running a business in? Yeah. Just like we did with the RV repair, just like we do with a lot of the other ones that we have, just like we do with all the, um, the, the. I mean, it comes down to, granted, I, I understand. The, the thing that worries me though is, and I understand where you guys are coming from, is that you're looking at, you don't want something to grow to where you're gonna overrun that piece of property with a bunch of crap, really is what you're looking at, right? Well, and that is one thing. Talk about the equipment that's gonna be stored, because I know that's an issue with a lot of people here is that, because I'll tell you, right up the street, we have.
What equipment we do store, I mean, it's like, light equipment, if we do any. And we can put up fences, we can put up trees for blockage. Some of the residents that are concerned can't even see the property in, from, from certain areas. They, they're surrounded by trees, but we, we can certainly plant mo- more trees and.
Make them grow.
Make them grow. We know how to make them grow. That's what we do. We can put up some privacy fence, uh, you know, that's not an issue with us at all.
Well, I will give you guys a chance. I'll give you, because I'm gonna ask some questions of you.
So you're just gonna be storing your own equipment? You're not gonna be bringing anybody else's equipment in or doing a rental type thing?
We would like to rent out some space to maybe help pay for.
Okay, that's the next, yeah, next place I'm going.
We have it on the map plan, but it'll be, it'll be like, light equipment.
Okay.
It's not gonna be anything, there's not gonna be no yellow iron in there. It's like, light equipment.
Okay, now here's where, here's, here's the thing. You're requi- you're trying to get an S U R for your shady tree business. Okay, and that's your, your treatment, your, your servicing trees, that, bringing the trees back, taking care of that. Now what you're doing, you're asking to use other parts of that property now for leasing space. Leasing, okay? That's where I have a problem in seeing that if you're, if you're applying for the S U R for your tree business, that, that's appropriate. But now what you're looking at is you're using that property for also, you may wanna sublease it out to, okay, we'll do an RV storage area.
No.
Sir, I. Light businesses.
I live there.
When you go into that, that's different and that goes outside of what the S U R I believe is, is, is pointed to, is specific for. The S U R is to, to by use, use that property as, as a use which you're looking, which the other goes outside, kinda of what I believe.
I don't know if it goes outside or not, but it's, it's, it all has to meet with you guys' approval, that's for sure.
And that also puts you more in a commercial realm. It'll take like a strip mall. Okay, I use one big building for one purpose, but then I break it up and I lease it off to different things. You turn it into, that's where, that's the problem I can, I can see with this, is that, you know, if you were strictly looking at your business.
Well, hopefully that's what it will be. I mean, I won't need to generate any income to help pay for a lot of the community services that we do, but, you know, whatever works for you guys and whatever works for the neighbors.
Well, do you, do you guys see what I'm saying?
The S U R only allows its current business as it exists.
Yes, and that's what, that's what I'm getting, but then what do you think?
It's for, it isn't for a whole bunch of other businesses added to it.
Now, Dan, what do you think? Okay, that's where, that's where I kinda wanted, that's where I was trying to go. Because using your S U R, you're trying to expand your S U R over purposes that aren't, aren't under that S U R.
Well, we would like to utilize as much.
What do you guys, Christine?
We could.
Christine, I said that, uh, if, you know, put another condi- a condition in that if they bring another business in, that it's gotta be approved.
Well, it has to be another S U R if they expand the. I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Hey Danny, can I ask one more question?
Yeah, Justin, but did you hear what we're trying, what we discussed?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm with you. Um, so looking back at this use table again, and you look under the, the land use section, the very top section, use categories, how, I guess I, I would consider this solid waste by the definition. This is solid waste, waste and, and/or trash recycle facility then, in some aspect of it. That's what they're doing. They're bringing branches back as solid waste, correct?
No, we're not bringing any branches back. That falls under the firewood, in my opinion, would fall under the category of renewable energy.
Well.
Justin, I don't know, I, I don't know how do you classify firewood? If they're bringing it back and then, then, uh, If they're bringing it back and then, then, and actually giving it away?
We're actually giving it away.
They're not selling it, they're giving it, I don't know if that...
How, how long has the firewood stayed on the property? A month, three months, two years? How, how long does the firewood stay on the property? Is it a long term or is it a short term? You know, is it 30 days, 60 days, three, six, you know, one year, two years? How long does it usually stay there?
Well, it, what we do use comes in and goes out as it's dried and ready to go out. So it just depends on how long that takes.
How much?
I mean, sometimes it could go out in a couple of months if it's split, sometimes it could go out, it's, it's never a huge pile, it's a big pile, but it comes in and goes out. If it gets to the point where we have too much of it, I mean, we'll just have to find another avenue to get rid of it, which is no problem, but as long, as far as I'm considering, as long as the community can use it, and it helps a lot of people out, I say that's a, that's a plus for Elbert County.
I guess my other question is, did Elizabeth Fire classify the size of the pile that it could get to before it's a fire hazard or a fire?
Yeah, they, they've looked at it and they've considered that.
Because I could see that in a dry time, as that could be a potential hazard, if that pile got too big, it'd be hard to, to, you know, if that pile were, say, gets struck by lightning, how would you get that put out in a reasonable time and order without, you know, if it got too large?
The good part about that is we're about less than a quarter mile away from that fire station.
Right, but do they have enough water and trucks in that station to get it under control without having to call in a bunch of other agencies, is where I'm kinda going at with that? Because water is limited in the rural areas.
Did he tell us how big, how, how much of an area you've consumed with firewood?
How big? Just give me an idea how...
There might be 10 to 50 cords. I don't really know.
I would say, between the logs that are whole, the logs that are cut into chunks that we can split, and the split firewood, I would say that would fit in about 1,600 square feet on the ground, 1,500. And that's to say the least, at most, you know, maybe 1,800, I mean, it's really not that big of a pile, and my boys do keep it stacked and nice.
Okay. Couple thousand square feet, I guess, right in that area right now.
And that, that you're storing back here? Were you keeping that towards the front or the rear of the lot, or is that?
It's, uh... There. It's just...
No, mine won't show up there, no. Christina? Well, the one, did we, Christina, did you find where it was appropriate to waive the community meeting?
We can just make a suggestion about that, we can, but if that's a great idea, that really is.
We could, yeah.
I did, I kinda had a note here, but, so essentially, we have, CDS had the option to waive...
Danny, we can't hear at all, sorry.
Ron, if you speak, what we're talking about is why, Justin, why the community meeting was waived, and Mr. Turner here has brought up, he actually stated the article where it was in the code, was it why it could be, why it was waived, it is a prerogative of CDS, but then he was saying there needs to be a specific reason, and that's what we're looking at.
Can we exit this full screen? By chance? Thank you.
So we're trying to find out, the reason it was waived is where we're at. Christina, can you enlighten us on that one?
And, again, that discussion we had on that, when we had the pre-apt, is that they've been operating for a number of years, that they're trying to come into compliance, and that we didn't have any record of any complaints on file.
Has there been any complaints filed with the county? If you could.
Most of the questions...
This doesn't work.
Well, Ben, yeah, thanks, Ron.
You know, most of us in the subdivision consider ourselves good neighbors, and December of 2011, these folks started hauling in trees, and of course, they decided not to go with the PUD. So some of the trees left, but there's still a pile of trees down there. Again, having a sign out and having their equipment there is not that big of a deal, and I think Joe even mentioned that. But when you start having a commercial operation, then it becomes a big deal. Again, we didn't have any real complaints, the traffic didn't seem to be that bad, but they do make some noise, and I think one of our neighbors, she shows horses, and it affects her horse sometimes when she's out there trying to ride and condition this horse. So, again, as a good neighbor policy, we haven't complained, and maybe we should have.
Okay. All right.
If you, if you don't mind, I'd like to just counter a couple of things that were said by the applicants. First thing, and this is to no fault of their own, one of the things that is a challenge in this particular scenario, you know, there's been talk about fences and trees. Unfortunately, their property is the low point in our neighborhood. All of our properties and our homes all sit up on a ridge and look down on their property. It is, I mean, it's great to hear their good faith that they would like to shield it, that is gonna be an extreme challenge to shield it from our view, because you would need a fence of a significant height and trees of significant height in order to block our view of it. So, you know, I appreciate their good faith offer there, but that's gonna be a challenge, because again, they're in the low point. There's been discussion about wood being stored, there has been, that portrayal was not completely accurate, and if it's possible for us to bring up the map of the property again, I'd like to point out a couple of things. We scroll to the north end of the property there. This area here that they have designated is not supposed to be part of this, there's already multiple piles of wood here that have been sitting there for years and years and years, that I look right down on. And the third thing I want to bring out, reference those piles of wood, is that was beetle kill, which you brought up, that they brought in and was not treated properly or covered. And I've lost, on my property, I've lost 22 trees as a result of beetle, beetles, then that started a year after they brought that wood in. So, you know, I mean, there's a lot, there's more to the story here, and I mean, if I knew I was gonna go down this route, I would've brought pictures of all this to show you guys, but, you know, unfortunately, you know, again, this, this is not how good neighbors treat their neighbors.
I have a picture of the rest of the wood Chris is mentioning in the back 40, if you want to see it.
Go ahead, look at it, Dan.
This is the stuff Chris is talking about? Do you see it's about? Something like that? And then that's the wood pile.
Okay, okay, all right. I...
As far as the beetle goes...
Go ahead, Roger, that'd be a good question. Hold on.
The chair, end of the day of motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I would like to make a motion that we postpone or adjourn the hearing on this issue, subject to a community meeting with the applicant, the neighbor, the concerned neighbors, and planning staff, and then come back to us with a revised hearing date.
Christina, did you hear that? Because it, really, I mean, I think if you'd have just had a community meeting, and what I'm seeing, pictures, if you had just met with everybody, it might have saved some of the animosity. So, we've got a motion and a second. Justin, did you hear it?
I did.
Okay. So motion and a second to have, have the community meeting occur, and then once they complete that, then come back. Christina, is that, can we do that?
Well, we kinda are.
We're kinda hard.
But it would be a notice to, and now when I...
Danny, I have a discussion on that, I don't see that that would be any inconvenience to the applicant, because they're already...
They're already doing the business, yeah.
They can continue as they are now, pretty much, and then have this meeting, and I think they should be able to resolve the issues and come back with staff involved, we could have other conditions applied to the, to the application.
Go ahead, Dan.
This is pretty late in the game to be doing this.
It is.
Okay? We have a process, okay, and it's not their fault, they're not the ones that waived the meeting, committee development did that, okay? And we have a process that says this, 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 and this, and we're all the way down to the end of this thing, okay? And we're gonna go back to the beginning?
Well, all we're doing is just going to conduct the community meeting.
But what could this add to? That, all you're gonna do is you're gonna hear the same thing.
Dan, the only reason I kind of think it might be, it might be a pretty good idea is because what I couldn't get was a real strong reason not to.
I already, we're already, we're already at the end.
But you got an S U R, it's a business going in, in a residential area, and it's, granted, it's been going on, and I thought, you know...
I, I'm fine, I've said my piece.
I, I get what you're saying, I, you got anything, Jason?
I kinda agree with Dan, but I see where, I'm the fence, I, I see it both ways. I see where, yeah, there should've been a community meeting, and everybody could've weighed out the pros and cons, maybe mitigated some issues that there's been that, you know, that they bit their tongue about, but at the, at the same time, there's been notice, they should've filed complaints when they got the notice in the mail, that we want a community meeting and move it, you know, moved it from tonight, so I'm all the fence, I see, I see it both ways.
Okay. You're kinda where, if we wouldn't have had so many people show up about this hearing, you know, then I thought, that's why I thought, okay, this is one we probably, community meeting might have been, done some good. All right, so we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill?
Justin, where are you?
I voted aye.
Okay. Good point, everybody, really. So, we're attached, is it, we will continue this?
Tell staff.
Tell staff, come back until we, you post, gonna have to post a community meeting, have the meeting, and then we'll come back and... That's what, I think that's what we'll recommend, I think it still goes to the B O C C, correct? Nah, I, I think it still goes to the B O C C. With a recommendation that there is a community meeting, then I think that's how it goes in check with that, Christina, but I think that's, because I mean, even if we recommend deny, it's still going to the board. But we can, yeah, but we continued it, but it doesn't, really, all that means is we continue until after the meeting. It's still scheduled and set to go to the board.
Mr. Chairman, if this is to go before the board, I have another condition of approval I'd like to recommend before we vote, that it goes before the board.
Well, you know, we're not voting, we're done.
We're done.
Yeah. Christina? See, what I'm not sure, Christina, is you're gonna kinda have to figure out, since we meant, we stated to continue it, until the meeting. Renotising it, it may be, then that may not require, it may not go to the board, and that's something you'll have to, because I don't, I'm not sure, because I think it won't go. Then, then it, then it will come back, I was gonna end it.
Okay. Yeah, but we didn't take that, we didn't take...
We didn't take any answers.
We didn't take, actually, one of the...
No, it shouldn't, you're right. Okay. All right. So, Dan, essentially, we can't, there's no more motions on me.
Yeah, yeah, that you'll hang on to it.
Ron?
Hang on to it.
A letter, again, how will that community meeting be noticed, so that everyone within that 1,320 feet is noticed so that they can attend this community meeting?
I think, go ahead, you guys have been on to that one, I think I know why, but...
It'll, it'll go through the noticing requirements in the Elbert County zoning regulations, which is a mailing and a sign posted on property, 14 days ahead of the meeting.
That's where we're at, it'll be re-noticed, it'll be a community meeting, and then we'll see you back here. Thank you.
Danny, before we move on, I did need to clarify that in the staff report, there was an error, it should say that the Elbert County Public Health Department does not require restrooms, in the staff report, it says does require restrooms, I need to clarify that, it should say does not require... I need to clarify that, it should say does not require restrooms. That's all, thank you.
Can we recess for about five minutes? That's what I couldn't figure out.
Where do you go in your day?
Oh, let me show you.
Seems a little cruel here.
From doing me up there. Ancient can be, like Sammy.
Thank you for listening.
Frustrating, it is, and, and for you folks, I can, I can.
We had one neighbor up there.
By the way.
These people.
Well, this thing is.
Nice.
Man, that looks good.
Those are big.
Yeah. Yes. Oh, I know.
Oh, when we were driving down there.
I love that area. I really liked, we just came back, actually, we took our university over to the raid. I love, I really like.
It's nice. Yeah, it is.
You never been to those? Do you have?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, thank you for referencing that, now I won't do it.
I lost my paper. Doing this, really. Cause I used to get, that's how I used to go to Moab. To go over that little suspension with the paint and the tables, built in nineteen ten or nineteen ninety-five.
Sounds beautiful.
It burns, it burns. I have a picture of my Dodge Charger on that bridge.
On the way down, we went past Buffalo herd. And in this buffalo herd, there were three white buffalo. I've never seen one. Never seen them on TV.
I've heard about them.
Yeah, I think I've heard.
And I'm like, we're lucky.
Do they survive? Do they survive?
I don't know.
I, I, I saw my medicine, the beer. Shit, I think.
You read it, I don't know. So I remember the band, he says, everything I wanted, and I said, I'm handling it. And he said, I can see that. These men are jumping in their crowd. And they went to the band, and when they saw Jay, they said, oh, there's the album. And I said, how dare you call my dog a dead. And they looked at me like, you know, Danny, I just knew the album.
It's my one word.
That and Taco Bell. Oh, I was. She, she. Okay, can I tell you what he said to me?
I, I.
Oh, my gosh. I thought, where's the horses? I was terrified, oh, I can't even, I can't. I mean, when I. I, my heart, I thought it was going to be sick. And then I saw. And then I took off. These poor men were standing there, and the one thing, no, don't give me that. I know you're speaking English, I heard you, don't do that. Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's get back to. We got one more, we got another application. We'll get together. Okay. Okay, let's get started. Folks, if we could. We've got, we've got another application we gotta hear, so, alright. Thank you. We'll work it out. Okay, I think we've got another. Linden, right?
Yep.
Yep. The rezon.
You could, you, you reconvene.
Just recess for yes. Okay.
Alrighty, you guys ready?
Yep, let's get started on the, um, Linden rezon.
Fantastic, alright, thank you Commissioners. I'm Greg Lowndes Leger for Community and Development Services, we're taking a look at Linden, case number RZ dash two zero dash zero, zero six two. This is a rezon of approximately thirty-five acres from Agriculture A to Agriculture Residential A R, located at one seven three five County Road one ninety-four Parker. The landowner is the Linden H Scott Senior Family Trust. The applicant representative is Tom Maroney. Size of the property is thirty-five acres. It is located one point eight two miles east of the Delbert Road and County Road one ninety-four intersection. It's at the very northwest corner of the county. A pre-application meeting was held July twenty-third, twenty twenty. Community meeting was held September twenty-first, twenty twenty. And a formal application was made October sixth, twenty twenty. Twenty-one day referral period began October sixth and ended October twenty-seventh. And the Board of County Commissioners will hear this on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Site description, it is a thirty-five acre tract of land located at the far northwest corner of, excuse, oh, I'm sorry, at the northeast corner of County Road one ninety-four and Michael Gates Drive. Topography, this property has a maximum elevation of six thousand one hundred and twelve feet and a minimum elevation of six thousand seventeen feet above sea level. The site has a riverine wetlands that runs from south to north through the site. There are no mapped one hundred year flood plans in the project area. There is a significant amount of riparian area on the project area. It is designated as riverine wetlands area by the U S Fish and Wildlife Service. There is a considerable amount of land that is suitable for building sites that will not disturb this riverine wetlands if approved. There are native ponderosa pines on the property, and native grass, grasses typical of the high plains cover the majority of the site except for the area classified as riverine wetlands by the U S Fish and Wildlife Service. Notice of public hearing was published in the Elbert County News on, on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. It was mailed to property owners within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet of the subject property boundaries on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. And a public notice sign was posted on property February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Here we have a sign of a public hearing posted on property with a notarized certification. Here we have the affidavit of publication and the notarized certification of mailing. Here is a vicinity map, you can see Aurora Reservoir, um, is to the northwest of the site and Parker is to the southwest of the site. Here's a zoning map. Uh, Douglas County, or excuse me, Arapahoe County, I'm sorry, is directly to the north across County Line Road. And the properties in this general area are zoned agricultural A with properties to the east zoned R A one. Applications were sent to referral agents per the Elbert County Regulations. Responding referral agents were the Elbert County Health and Human Services, no objection. Arapahoe County Public Works had no objection, they did request a drainage letter and a traffic letter. Um, I'll get to those in a second here. Elbert County, or excuse me, Arapahoe County Engineering Services had no objection. Colorado Division of Water Resources had no objection. You can see the attached letter, I'll get to that here in a second. And Intermountain Rural Electric Association had no objection. Philip sixty-six had no objection, and New Star Energy had no objection. Article three, C four of the Elbert County zoning regulations, list review criteria A through F for all rezon requests. Six criteria are as follows. Criteria A, whether the proposed rezon conforms to and is generally consistent with the goals and policies of the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. Proposed rezoning does comply with the goals and policies outlined in the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. Criteria B, whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with surrounding land uses. The land uses in the surrounding area are agricultural and single-family residential, these uses are compatible with the single-family residential use being proposed. Criteria C, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the provision of pub, provision of public services. And this proposal will not adversely impact the provision of public services. Criteria D, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the environment. The proposal will not unreasonably impact the environment if approved. Staff recommends that the applicant site structures and driveways in a manner that, that does not disturb areas of the site that are identified as wetlands by the U S Fish and Wildlife Service. Criteria E, whether the proposed rezoning would create unreasonable traffic congestion or burden the existing road system without improvements. The proposal will not create an unreasonable traffic, unreasonable increase in the amount of automobiles that travel along County Road one ninety-four or Michael Gates Drive on a daily basis. And F, whether the proposed rezoning will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the present or future inhabitants of Elbert County. And this proposal will not be unreasonably detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the present or future inhabitants of Elbert County. Based on Article three, C four of the Elbert County zoning regulations, staff finds the following. A, the proposed rezoning complies with the goals and policies outlined in the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. The land, land uses in this surrounding area are single-family residential. The land, land uses in this surrounding area are single-family residential. Um, I went over these just a second ago. Um, here they are laid out. And in consideration of the staff findings above, and, and as we understand it, that there are no objections from other governing bodies, the recommendation of County, excuse me, of Community and Development Services is to recommend approval of Linden RZ two zero dash zero zero six two to the Board of County Commissioners, subject to the following conditions. Condition one, the applicant will be required to remove the public hearing sign within seven days of a decision by the Board of County Commissioners. Two, the rezon shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the rezon exhibit is recorded. Three, recordation of all appropriate documentation is to occur within a hundred and eighty days of a board accounting commissioner's approval. Four, Division of Water Resources provide a referral comment indicating that the referee ruling filed February third confirms that adequate water can be provided without causing injury. I do want to add that the applicant did provide a signed, um, version of this decree that, um, shows the ruling making this requirement not necessary. Five, Arapahoe County Engineering Services provides referral comment indicating that they have reviewed the traffic impact study and are satisfied with the findings. They have been, uh, referred twice on this without providing comment. Um, Elbert County Public Works has reviewed these documents, being the, the drainage letter and traffic letter, and, uh, they are satisfied with the findings. Uh, we do just want to make sure that Elbert, or excuse me, Arapahoe County does provide this final comment. Arapahoe County Engineering, s- six, Arapahoe County Engineering Services provides referral comment indicating that they've reviewed phase one drainage report and are satisfied with those findings. So again, um, really, they haven't been responsive. I don't, I'll leave that to you guys, how you wanna, um, if you do want to stipulate those conditions, but that would be what Community and Development Services has to, um, make sure that they have been properly referred. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. I believe we have, um, Mr. Maroni?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioners. That was an, that was an interesting little meeting. But, uh, thanks for your time. I appreciate it very much. Um, I'll just, uh, touch on a few things. Um, as Greg said, I sent him the decree. It was issued by the court two weeks ago, as far as the water was concerned. And, um, the state is fine with it. Uh, we, just for the record, we did have a community meeting. Um, we did do a drainage study and a traffic study, which was, um, Arapahoe County, uh, required. Um, the drainage study and the traffic study both said there's no impacts. Um, Arapahoe County has, and they got those studies probably at least two months ago, if I'm correct, Greg. Um, and, uh, we did them right away. And, uh, again, there, there's no impact. But Arapahoe County hasn't responded. So if we want to wait for them to respond, I guess we can try to push them, but, uh, they're not really too interested in it. Um, and that's just about it. I mean, it's a pretty straightforward situation. As far as the, um, wetlands are concerned, um, there's, first of all, we cannot even get a building permit for anywhere where that wetlands would be. And as Greg stated in his staff report, um, there's more than sufficient, uh, property to be able to put another single-family house on it. There's a single-family house on the road right on, right on one ninety-four right now. And so this is to create another lot, seventeen and a half acres and seventeen and a half acres. And, um, that's about it. I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Let's see, I think we have, we have some. Not a few, we still have eighteen people, looks like we're nineteen people on Zoom. Do we have any, um, public comment?
Um, this is Karen Jones. This is Karen Jones, and I was, is this still, um, they're only requesting this to be divided and to do something?
I am having. Can you guys understand her? I, I'm having a hard time understanding you. I can't make that out, your name?
Is Karen Jones? Can you hear me?
Karen Jones.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so my question is, how many, um, homes are they adding to this thirty-five acres?
How many homes? Just one right now is what.
Can I answer that question?
Yes, go ahead, Tom, please.
There's one single-family home on the property right now. Uh, Mr. Linden unfortunately has passed away. Um, he's on that property for quite some time. And, uh, his estate is settling it right now. And so there, we're creating one extra, one, one other lot of seventeen and a half acres and then the house with seventeen and a half acres. So it'd be one, one single-family residence on the new lot. Just one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Okay, we have, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, please, uh, Delos Searls, uh, we live just south, seventeen forty-five Michael Gates Drive. Um, if I can ask, Mr. Maroni, what is your, uh, role in this? You said the estate is settling this?
Um, my role in this is a representative for the, um, applicant. Um, so I take the, uh, application through for them. Um, the estate is the one that hired me to, uh, take this application through to the county.
Okay. Um, thank you. The, uh, public meeting, how is that held and where was that held? We had no notification of a public hearing.
We, um, and, and staff can verify this because we sent, uh, we had a public notice sign and sent mailing out to everybody within three, thirteen hundred and twenty feet by, uh, first-class mail. Um, and that meeting was, well, Greg had it already.
September twenty-first.
September twenty-first. And, uh, I had quite a few people that were on, it was a Zoom meeting. And, um, I talked to a number of the neighbors, most of them in the Elkhorn Ranch subdivision. Um, but that was all, uh, done per, uh, statute.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
The, uh, parcel, uh, divide, how is that being divided? We have not seen a map on that. That being divided north, south, east, west, and then the secondary, uh, parcel with the new house. Where will the driveway, will that access one ninety-four or will it access Michael Gates?
Uh, they had, they actually can access it from either one, uh, Michael Gates or one ninety-four. Uh, just depending on where they want to do it. If they were going to access it from one ninety-four, it would be on the east side of the property. Um, going up to it. And it's being, it's being split. Um, there's a, a north portion and a south portion. So the south portion is, hold on a minute, I can tell it. If I can read this, the measurements are. Like I said, they're each one seventeen and a half, seventeen point five acres. Um, and it's just about right in the middle that goes from east to west. Um, above the house. And then the other portion is on the south side.
So the, the existing house being on the north section and the new parcel or a new development, new house would be on the south?
That, that's correct, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, a picture of it right there.
They put a picture up there for you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so the only way the south portion would be able to access the property would be off of Michael Gates Drive?
Uh, it could, it could also access off of one ninety-four, it just depends on what the, um, owner would, the new owner would want to do. Because it could come up the east side of, um, the lot number one where the house is uh, or up Michael Gates Drive. And the, um, owner does have, uh, there's an easement that goes up to it. And the owner actually owns, that, that easement is goes halfway, uh, to the middle of Mi, Michael Gates Drive. His ownership goes to the middle of Michael Gates Drive.
Correct. And then.
No, you know, you know where the mailboxes are?
I do.
Yeah, it's just, just a little bit past the mailboxes, right up there. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments.
I think we have another hand up. I think. Diana?
Yes, Diana, um, impact fees are not applicable in this use. Um, once they build a home, just like any other residential use, there will be the standard, um, residential growth impact fees. Yes, it's, it's four percent cash and move open space fees of the appraised or sale value, whichever the applicant chooses to go with. That's, that's part of the, uh, that's part of the minor plat process tonight. We're taking a look at the rezon.
This is just the rezon tonight.
Yep.
But, um, we, we understand fully what those impact fees are. There's growth impact fees, fire impact fees, school impact fees, um, road impact fees. And with, when you do it, when we're doing a minor development where there's a house on one, um, and we split it, instead of ten percent, it's four percent, and that's the county regulation. So four percent of whatever the appraised value of the south lot is. And we understand that fully.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions out there?
Don't see anybody, Greg, do you see anybody?
I do not. If you're on Zoom and you'd like to speak and haven't yet, please go ahead and unmute yourself and go ahead and speak. All right, Danny, I'm not seeing any. Thank you.
Seeing none, do you guys, do you have any questions up here?
I have one. The, uh, water letter? And I didn't.
Yes, sir.
I didn't see where this is all covered. But, uh, you know, it asks for, uh, a water supply plan. It asked to provide information on existing well permit, and I, I think I saw some we had up there on it, but I didn't see anything in the package on it. And then provide evidence that a decree has been approved by the water court. You know, those three items are in the, end of the water letter, uh, from the, uh, Colorado Division of Water Resources.
Yes, um, as I stated, um, approximately two weeks ago, uh, prior to that, let me just start there. Uh, the referee for the water court signed off on it. And then there's a twenty-one day, um, referral period after the referee signs it to see if there's any, um, objections. And there were no objections. And so the court, um, issued their decree for the wa, for the adjudication and augmentation plan, uh, about two weeks ago. And Greg has that in his file. I did send it last week, but somehow it didn't get caught. So I sent it to Greg again today, and Greg has that in his files.
Tom, can, can I get a, um, we just need to specify maybe a condition of approval that CDS gets a hard copy version of that?
Oh, not yet. That's fine, I can, I can deliver one tomorrow.
Cool, thank you.
Because I did, I did email that to you today, again, so. And Greg, you are in, in possession of that, correct?
Yes, I, I have it. And, um, I believe, uh, Commissioner Hogan Dyke would like to have a, a paper copy of that.
Yeah, I will have it to you tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Do you need a condition? Are you okay with?
If.
If he's got it, he, you know.
If he got all those conditions.
You got the email, right?
The information you got.
Yes.
I'm okay, that.
Okay.
I was actually asking you the question, but Tommy.
Okay. Yep, I, I have the official PDF copy of it, and we'll just make sure to get a hard copy for the file.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Roger? No? Justin?
Nothing for me, looks good.
Okay. All right. And entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, uh, the Linden rezon, F twenty dash zero zero six two, um, be approved with the, um, I have six conditions that are listed.
I'll second that.
Got a second, okay, that, um, posting from Peter is second. You did, Dean?
Danny, Danny, um, the applicant, the applicant agrees to the conditions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, there are no additional conditions. Okay, we've got the ones that were on the application, so it would be as, as presented.
Yeah, the six, the six that are listed.
That are presented.
And, uh, number four might not be required anymore. I don't know if you guys want to strike that or keep it, it's up to you. I can bring it up here.
If it's been, if it's been, if it's going to be covered, that's fine, let's leave it as a condition and then just go with it.
Okay. Me.
Okay, so we have a, um, motion and a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Mr. Maroni, thank you.
Thank you for, uh, staying so late.
Mine is it? Oh, it's nine thirty.
Yeah.
Good about to eleven.
Yeah, you, hey, I just want to tell you guys, you know where that eleven o'clock thing started? That started with me back in two thousand and four when I did Elkhorn Ranch, because we went till four o'clock in the morning. And the, and the commissioner said, no more of this nonsense, so.
All right.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Thank you, staff. Thank you.
You're in the jury.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.